All right, I'm letting people into the waiting room and we should be good to go, Mr. Chair.
So everybody's on? All right, so it's Wednesday, October 15th at 6:30 PM. We have a hybrid meeting tonight, item one, a call to order. Just to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. Let's see. So I'm Patrick Frisco, the chair. Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, is on remotely. Mr. Stephen Geller, Mr. Tom Praddy. I'm in two associates this evening, Mr. Eric Costa and Mr. Chris John Fabroski. So KJ, do you want to vote tonight? Because he voted last week, it's just the new stuff. So we'll have you vote tonight if you don't mind, mix it up. So during the meeting, all votes will be roll call votes. Because we have Mr. McDonald remotely, so we do stick with the roll call. Mr. O'Brien, correct?
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
The following Bridgewater Town staff will be participating with us here and remotely. Mr. Shane O'Brien is here, Mr. Greg Tanzi and Mr. Steven Solari. And Mr. Greg Tanzi is the town engineer, and Mr. Steven Solari is the building commissioner there remotely. So I will go on to item two, this is site plan review. This is Zero Lakes Show Center, map 96, slot 16. It's encompass health for a site plan approval on the sections 9.4 and 10.6 of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance and a modification to the existing special permit from the 1988 decision for proposed inpatient rehabilitation hospital with associated parking and drainage. This was continued from September 17th. They submitted a continuation request today, is that correct?
Yep, that is correct. They requested a continuance to the November 5th planning board meeting.
Do we have anything else on that night yet?
Do we have anything else for that night? We have, I was going to mention it later, we do have the, a zoning ordinance referral. And we may also have a street acceptance for that meeting, as well as all the items going to be continued from this meeting.
So there's nothing really too time consuming at that next meeting? So we can move, if they want November 5th, we have
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing, you know, too time consuming for that meeting.
All right, so we have a continuation request on November 5th. Somebody want to make a motion to continue that?
So moved.
By Mr. Geller, do a second?
Second.
And Mr. Praddy? Any discussion? So, and Mr. Fabroski? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, okay. All right, moving on, item three, we have a subdivision. This is another public hearing, this is for 593 Plymouth Street. This is Bardy Investment Group LLC, proposed subdivision titled Revelation Road with six buildable lots, two drainage lots and 5.9 acres. This is continued from September 17th. They also submitted a continuation request, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, that is correct. They requested requested a continuance to the November 5th meeting as well.
Okay, so any discussion, board discussion on that? Did we want to do a sidewalk on that one at all? Is there any interest in that or no?
Yes.
Yes?
There's interest.
So Mr. O'Brien, maybe you could reach out to the applicant?
Sure.
And see if it's okay to schedule a sidewalk there with Mr. Silva?
Yeah, we can look to potentially schedule a sidewalk, whether it be, I'll check with everyone's availability prior to November 5th, as well as reach out to the applicant as well.
So we also, so just last time when we did the encompass, it was a little disjointed and we didn't have enough people there and it wasn't staked out. So what would we like to see stake, the center line of the road?
Definitely entrance, center line.
Drainage basins?
Yep, absolutely.
Is that it?
Yeah, we're going to give the subjects or corners and parcels now, everything else should be fine.
So we'll reach out to
Yeah, I can reach out
Silva's office and ask him to stake the center line of the road, the drainage lots.
And there There's no problem at all, I'll see what their availability is to turn that around as well, too.
And then do a doodle poll, then we can post it to the public notice.
Yeah, next, next time I'll also make sure that, because of the doodle poll last time, there was some confusion, that when I picked some dates, it had me as a person, so that's why
Yeah.
there was the assumption that a quorum was going to be available at one of the meetings.
All right, so if we could work with the developer on that, I thought of that last meeting, but it's too late to bring it up.
There's no problem, I can bring it up with the applicant.
All right, so we have motion to continue until November 5th?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Praddy, do a second?
Second.
To Geller, any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
All right. So moving on, we have Zero Pleasant Street, this is Clamont Hotel 2 LLC. This is the landscape plan update per our site plan conditions. They also asked, this, this was continued from September 3rd. Third, they also asked for another continuation, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So November 5th as well?
Uh, it's going to be, the request was to December 3rd.
December 3rd?
2025. So yeah, they requested a continuance to the first meeting in December.
Okay. Any discussion on that one? So do we have a motion to move that to December 3rd?
So moved.
Mr. Geller, do a second?
Second.
Mr. Praddy? Any discussion? Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
All right, we have a street acceptance request, this was referred to us from the town council, correct?
That is correct.
And the applicant asked for an extension, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes, the applicant, Oldfield Estates, represented by Lee Castaneda, is unavailable for tonight's meeting. So I requested that it's be a discussion item for the November 5th meeting.
Do you know when this was referred to us?
It was referred to us, I believe
The last council meeting, I heard it, I watched.
So this, this is subject for the same 60 days?
Uh, I believe we have more time for street acceptances.
Okay.
Well, maybe
But so
It shouldn't, it shouldn't
We're still, we're still fine, right?
That is correct, yes.
So November 5th? So do we have, the applicant asked for a
Yeah, the applicant just wanted to be able to represent, because this item had been before the board, I believe last year where we did do a unanimous to not recommend. So they want to come in and kind of just display the answer some questions that may exist, as well as be able to address the corrections made since the last attempt.
So
Is that all three?
It's all, it's all three, Oldfield, they're all little streets off Oldfield. Can, can you do us a favor? So there's, the logic piece has been accepted by Wildlands Trust?
Correct.
There's still that smaller piece there that is the assemblage through Jenny Leonard Park where they created the parking lot that the planning board asked for.
Right.
And we still, I think the town said they didn't want it, we did want it.
I, I don't think they've, the way that I've kind of looked at it through past emails is that I think there was a right of first refusal for the, the other Wildlands Trust lot, but I'm not sure if there was one for the one adjacent to Jenny Leonard Park.
Well, can you reach out just before?
Sure.
And just ask Attorney Castaneda if that is still available for the town to take?
Yeah, I can
Because we keep bringing that up in CPC. And that, you know, it's too bad that the position's changed to the town, when we designed that neighborhood, there's a big elevation change on Cherry Street.
Sure.
And we had a nice parking lot created, a trail to the, to the park, and they cleaned up the park and everything else. And now the town's saying they don't want it, so it's a no brainer to take it. So can you just see if it's still available and then before the next meeting, I can maybe talk to Mr. Davis?
Talk internally, as well as reach out to Lee, just to give him a heads up on that better.
All right, just to see if that one is still available for us. But I, I believe we did ask for a first right of refusal on that one.
Uh, for the I only remember the ones for Wildlands Trust, I know that one went to council and that it was council action that's required for the right of first refusal.
Well, what, if you look at that old zoning ordinance, we're supposed to approve where it goes anyway, whether it goes to an HOA, whether it was
Sure, it's, yeah, subject to, I think
Planning board approval, so
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue that to November 5th?
So
And Mr. Praddy, do a second?
Second.
Mr. Geller, any discussion? Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, okay. All right, so item six, right? We have, the only, this is a lot release request for Hampton Ave, which is also known as Zero Winter Street. So Mr. Tanzi, do you want to go, I know you did a bond calculation on this, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
So sir, are you here to represent this neighborhood? Do you want to come on up?
Please sign in. Uh, Sean Mayer, 260 Winter Street, I'm here as, representing the applicant of 260 Winter Street. We have 90% of this road completed here. Mr. Tanzi did do a, a bond number to it. He put a bond number of 107,000, I believe is what it, what it was. Tonight, we're here just asking for a lot release for two of the four lots there. Uh, and in lieu of the bond, leaving the other two lots as knowing that bond would have to be paid or completion of the road at that time. We'd like to start basically on two of these lots. And while machinery is there, finish out what we're doing there. So that's what we're looking to request today.
So Mr. Tanzi, are you comfortable with that bond number?
I am, Mr. Chairman, yes.
So Mr. Solari, in the past, we've released lots without a bond?
Yeah, we, we've limited to usually one lot.
And Mr. Mayer, is there one lot you want to start with right away?
Well, we'd really like to do the two, and if we could do a portion of the bond of, of that, that would be fine, as well as if asking for two of them, rather than paying full bond amount for all four.
So in the past, we just they have to post the bond before occupancy, right?
Sure. From my experience here, I don't believe we've done that, we've only, we've typically, from my experience here, we've done one, asked for all, all or nothing, or given one lot, or yeah, pretty much that, I've never kind of dealt with a partial, I, I understand the reasoning behind it, but it's attributing what, what number to the cost of the lot essentially, so.
Is there one lot you want, we can work with just
There's, well, there's two particular lots we'd like to develop at this moment, the argument on the other side to Shane's point is that two other lots, what they're worth, keeps me vested into this project, right? The bond number is to make sure that I'm going to continue to develop that. There's, let's just call them 200,000 a lot, there's 400,000 still sitting on the table there. That's my argument from my side of it.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Brian?
Well, what we attribute through do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I'm just going to add something to that. I thought right now that there's only three lots on the street that were technically approved. So there's one lot, one lot in the commercial or not?
No, this, that was rezoned by council probably three or four months ago, Steve.
Oh, okay, I know there was talk about it, but I didn't know that if that lot finally did get
It was approved by council probably, we haven't updated the zoning maps to reflect that, but it was approved by council probably about three months ago, so the entirety of that parcel is now featured in the residential zone.
Thank you.
No problem. All right.
Board of comments or questions?
But yeah, I can, I can bring up
The bond?
Bond amounts really aren't attributed to lots, but it's, it's, the work needed to still be done is, we're looking at head walls, additional piping, uh, bituminous concrete, as well as, you know, as-built survey, uh, tree planting, sewer manholes, uh, and other utilities. I can actually bring that up.
And the top quarter pavement?
Oh, yeah, top quarter pavement, so the construction cost to complete the project is about 71,760, but with a contingency of 50%, that totals out to 107,640. If I can, if I can pass that along? I'll bring that up the screen, I'm having some technical difficulties on the screen here, but
So the town's position in the past is when one lot, right? Without a bond?
Yeah, typically, I guess the, the town's position has been you know, releasing one lot and holding three with the assumption that surety would be out. We are also holding all three lots in covenant as well. So they can't really do anything without our action, it's just, you know, with that, it's just finding something that we're comfortable with. If the board's open to partial surety, I think we would have to look at what number of what's been kind of attributed here to that, because we don't really attribute the value of lots on this surety request, it's really the value of work to be done. So we would have to kind of create that as like its own separate item and, you know, discuss what things we're comfortable with to attribute a cost to it.
So, this is the same as the email, right?
Uh, that's correct. Here on the screen.
All right, you know what, Shane?
Yep.
I'm not that smart, I recuse myself from this hearing because I own the lot next door. I probably, I probably shouldn't participate, right?
You didn't, you didn't do anything wrong, Mr. Chair?
It's just a lot, I mean, it's just a lot release anyway, but
You do, yeah, we still have five members that can participate.
Yeah, I feel like if you pay the whole thing, just, you know, and then just be done with it, skip a bond on the way? That's just my town.
Mr. Tanzi?
Yes.
This is an updated sheet, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I Move maybe in addition to when you, we got a lot of movie out of the way. So you're going to be bringing that in to get the bond anyway, I guess?
Yeah, I think we've always tried to work with developers, and I think that in the past, all the neighborhoods we've done, we've allowed one
Correct.
One released. Is there one particular one that you want to start with now?
This
I, I know you want to do two, but is there one that's, is it for grading reasons, you want to do two?
Well, correct, that is a portion of it, I mean, the particular one on the left-hand side, if I finish the road aspect of it, it's only going to get torn up by this one that's going in there, so I kind of like to do them both at the same time. Right, so that particular one, it, it just doesn't make sense to finish the road on that side, put all those trees in, just to wipe them out as we're doing it, right? So I don't really want to do that work twice. That's one in particular, but there's a second one that we're also trying to do at the same time. Again, my argument was on the other side of it, I don't want to go back for the other two at any point until this is done. My plans or intentions are to finish the road in the spring, it's just a matter of, we just paved it, as you know, you want to leave it for, for a year, let it settle. You know, there's very minimal work that's left there. It was really about not tying up another 100,000, where it's really tying up 150,000, because not only is it 100,000 into the bond, but now it's the other 70,000 that I also have to put into the road in order to do that as well, right?
Greg, do you have, I, we have your bond estimate in front of us, do you have an idea of how much work? Or you can attribute a cost to how much work has been done, or I guess, Don, can you do that as well, too?
You mean it's on the bond sheet that's been done since the bond was done?
Uh, yes.
So some of the work on that bond sheet has been completed?
No, not, not work that's been done since, I'm saying, what, can you attribute a cost value of not work that's needs to be done, but of work that has been done?
I can tell you that I paid 450,000 into this road. That's what I can tell you. That I owe another 70, roughly 70,000, my number is a little bit lower than his, but it's, it's right on.
Not that that matters at all to us.
No, I, no, but I agree, but that's just my argument as well, is that I'm into this thing for a million on the, on a sale price, I have 500,000 into it, I'm still leaving 400,000 on the table with two other lots. I'm just arguing that, can I hold on to another 125 to try to finish the road? Actually, it's more than that, it'll be 170. Because I got to pay the 100 there, plus I still need 70 in order to finish the road before I can get my 100 back.
Does your, I mean, that you don't want to pay the full amount of the bond? You want to pay half of it?
Well, I'm just arguing I'm asking for two lots, I'm asking in any fashion in which we can have two lots. My other argument is that instead of getting all four lots, do I have to pay the entirety of that bond? Or if I'm only going to take one extra on that, can I pay a third of that, right?
Yeah, because Oh, I'm sorry, and the assumption is that if he pays the 107, we can release all lots, because we have the surety that all the work is correct on.
Do we have, do we still have leverage if he can't get his occupancy permit, right? So he's
Correct.
Don't we still have
Yeah, if you would like to make that as a, a condition, typically what we would see for I, I would assume that the timing probably works out in our favor, in your favor as well, too, but it, it does get to a point where we're attributing it to an occupancy permit where you, we get, you know, from my experience, we get calls from people moving in, or he sells the property, and they're like, why can't I get my occupancy permit, I'm, you know, I'm closing this week. And it's like, well, the developer needs to give us 50,000 dollars, where it seems like we're kind of extracting money from people.
What's been the history? What, what did you learn? This request I've asked, it would be made
Basically, every, basically every neighborhood that we've had, whether it be real or loose one.
But what would it take for two? The whole thing? In that, in the area, or the whole lot? Is there anything for or favoring two?
I guess it's attributing, attributing the value of that other lot to value of work remaining, I guess. And I, I just, we got to, we got to figure out something, because right now, we're basing it, like I said, we're basing it on certain aspects of the subdivision, not necessarily the value of a lot. So if we determine that the work that's been done in the value of the last two lots, essentially the value of those last two lots have to be some sort of number that we would be holding as surety. What then? What do I recommend? I, I, I like having surety, I like having the full amount, I'm fine with you know, one lot to be released, it's just, I think what we should have on paper in regards to a number for Winter Street, or I'm sorry, Hampton Ave. Is that I'm fine with accepting partial surety, it's just a matter of attributing that partial surety to a fair number based on something, something accurate.
It's tough to do partial surety, because then you have to adjust line items, right? Like where, where does that partial surety go? I'm not worried about this project, but we all know, yeah, I just don't want to start a process.
We all, we all know, we all know, we all know that we have subdivisions around town that have been sitting for years.
And we don't have any leverage, because lots were released and there's not enough
Yeah, and we have subdivisions where we're still waiting on, you know, security and all that.
I mean, wasn't bombs up there too, down by, like, still, like, we didn't catch anything for that?
Yeah, there's not much of that, yeah.
I'd have to agree, I mean, I think if we, we change the precedent to accept this, it's going to make a, a mess, you know, for the town down the road, I think you're going to see a lot of people want to try to do that, and I think it's it's going to cost a lot more work for the town.
So I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave it up to you guys, because I didn't sit down on the hearing, but this I mean, I think
So
You want to set a precedent, right? Yeah, well, once you do, you're stuck with it.
So I guess the position on the board is to release one lot.
I mean, generally, generally, we work like whether it be Oldfields, Magnolia, like whenever those developers came in, we'd always release like one lot from, just like, we, what did we call, what did you call it, Steve? Like a model house? Like a model lot? But then it would be
Yeah, it was, basically, we, we did it for a model home, you know, they all, they all want, we did the same thing for Ducksboro, they built the first home from model home, and then we started releasing lots afterwards.
Well I, I would say, this one's it's difficult with this one, because we, we haven't really gotten someone to do this amount of work prior to asking for a lot.
I was just going to argue, yeah, just sorry, this side of, you know, the dollars that are attached to this versus the dollars that you're associating, I would just say are just vastly different within that. That's just my only argument on the other side of it. Again, I can show you, I mean, again, the dollars are definitely more on that lot than it ever is for the other side, for what's, what is owed there. And the only reason that the road isn't completed is because why would I go to, I, I can't go plant trees, I don't, I'm not there, I can't water them, I can't, I just can't finish the road, really, without being there.
I mean, a lot of the other subdivisions we had too, were like two lot subdivisions, so if you had one, you only had one left, and
Yeah, the last time I think we saw something where we released a lot, it was the three lot subdivision. We had a three lot subdivision, two lot subdivision. You know, there, there are some other subdivisions that we've seen recently, Seridum Way or Pinnacle Point, that haven't asked for any lots to be released. So we really haven't had a, a true discussion about
Yeah, just keep, just keep in mind, those, those are coming in and whatever we, you know
Oh. Sure thing. I guess based on the information we have right now, you know, I, I think that it's clear that, you know, we have a number and, but I think looking at potentially, you know, seeing a number on your guys' end of, you know, work that's been completed in like timelines of work to be completed, I think there, that could work for like the comfort of the board, I just think that right now, we need to attribute a num, the number that we can attribute the work to be is kind of fair for one lot. So I, I think we would need additional information to kind of put on the value of those lots, so that we feel comfortable holding a certain amount of money of work needed to be completed, while also understanding what the value of these lots are.
Could you, could you get more of the work done, except for the, the final pavement, obviously?
Not really, the head walls, the particular head wall that's there is for one of the lots that is going to get ruined during construction there, there's some miscellaneous loam and seeding
So where the head wall, where the head wall goes, is that on one of the lots you want to have released?
Yes.
You don't have electric in there yet?
Electric is underground, yes. It is not pulled in, they won't pull until I'm drawing a blank at the moment, they won't pull the, the wire in until building permit or
Probably a service on
A service of some sort, yeah. It's all underground and stubbed, everything is there, pads are in, transformer's ready. The only thing I'm waiting on is them coming to pull that wire.
You can't, you can't do the retaining wall?
Retaining wall, we've actually chatted with the neighbor over there and made hi, we did not have a grading easement when we first started this. From chatting with him, he did not want it, he did not like this retaining wall, we've kind of worked things out with the neighbor over there in order to try and make that. So it's, there was a 10-foot retaining wall within this, that is now not there, and when you can go there, Mr. Tanzi has, I know he has seen it, we've, we've looked at it, it's, there's nothing there anymore. From now that there's, with partnership with the neighbor that's there.
So was the asset
Well, don't get me wrong, that's still a part of that plan at this moment. Right, until we come back with all as-built and have everything completed and done, then it would be removed from it, but that is still what's on the outstanding, because it's not completed, right? But it's truly not even outstanding.
We do, we have a preliminary as-built as well available, I did present it to the board, but if anyone wants to check it out, it's right here as well.
So adjusting line items, just trying to think of this, you could just you could just say that it would take everything except for the contingency now?
We could.
To reduce it a little, do two lots, you know?
So that would be
That'd be one line item you reduce. Thirty, that's
Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand taken out.
Yeah. You know? Put it at 70.
What's that?
We would put it at 70, roughly, yeah.
And then, and then you could say that before the other two lots are released or, or, or occupancy permits, you could do they have to pay the contingent, they have to pay the contingency.
Could do that?
That way
Or completed work?
It would be
And, and you could reduce the completed work.
So it would be the release of two lots, based on the construction cost to complete the So it would be the release of two lots, um, based on the construction cost to complete the project. And then we would hold. Off until the other two lots would be attributed to contingency. So I guess in that aspect.
And we're not gonna release the other two lots until we got an updated bond calculation showing the work that's been done and. If you wanna try to work with them, it's another option.
That's a possibility. I'm just trying to think of when things are completed, I guess we, we wouldn't be able to release. Any bond monies until that additional payment be provided to us. So if, if he requests, you give him two lots for the construction cost portion of this bond estimate. And he does say he does the as-built survey and he wants money back, we need the full amount prior to any money. At that point, you probably, you know, you have two lots already and then additionally you need to provide thirty five thousand.
I don't have any problems in the sense that I only, when requesting these two lots, it can be. I don't get those two lots until everything is completed within everything.
You provide us a check for seventy one thousand seven sixty.
Right, correct.
So the issue arises when an occupancy permit's issued and then you can sell that one to maybe somebody else and then you got.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
So you just gotta tie it to the occupancy too.
Yeah, that's, if, if that's what the board wants to do, Steve and I. Make sure that.
I'm just throwing ideas out, so.
I, I just think something we gotta, I guess, consider for future projects too. Cause I know we do have everything for work to be completed. As, uh, you know, we have line items, but there is, there is a value to the lots as well too. But I, I think. If, if you're okay with that, Greg, do you think that's something that's, or, or do you, is. You think that's something that we could attempt to do or do you think we're devaluing contingency by doing so?
No, this isn't us. This is him and everyone.
Is he on?
Um, I don't think so.
I can still see him on the screen. I think he might be muted.
Greg, can you hear us?
Um, yeah, I, I can hear you now. Um. Sorry, I, this, um. The volume was, uh. Was, was down a little bit, um.
Let me repeat the question?
Sure, please.
No, I'm just saying if we're attributing the, uh, the value of these two lots. To the to, construction cost to complete the project. Are we, are we devaluing the contingency by stating that? We're gonna take the seventy one thousand seven hundred and sixty and tie it to lots one and two. And then as like a partial surety and then when lots in three and four are requested that we ask for that additional contingency as part of. Um, that request as well as attributing it to. Uh, occupancy permits to. Um, the lots one and two for bond release as well as not providing any monies to be released from surety. If work's been completed, if that contingency hasn't been posted at that time.
Yeah, I, I think you can do that. Um, when, when the first two lots have been built out. The developer will be able to sell those and generate. Enough income to pay off his debts and to provide the additional, uh, surety for the, for the other two lots. That will have, uh, the contingency, uh, built into them. Um, the last two lots, you would definitely want the contingency be, being built into it. Um, the contingency cost is not as critical in the first two lots because you're holding. Uh, the other two lots and those two lots, you know, the market value of those two lots are well. Um, in excess of what, uh, the entire bond is being, um. Asked for with the contingency. So I, I don't really see a problem in, in going that route if you so desire to do so.
No, I, I, I think it's just from my opinion. I think that's fine. Um, I just wanted to make sure, uh. That sounded good on your end, but I think getting any sort of amount of money, um, for these two lots and having. A surety based on, around real numbers is, I think, fair for the board.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
So I guess if the board's open to it, um. Attribute those lots one and two to be released based on the amount of money of seventy one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. And that number is attributed from the cost, construction cost to complete the project, um, from Greg's bond estimate.
Yeah, well, we're just throwing ideas. Somebody can make a motion whether they wanna stick a, we've been doing in the past or whether they wanna go that direction or whatever. Any thoughts?
Uh, I think like you said, we typically like to work with our developers, but, um. And, and I think under the circumstances of the way this one's going. I'm co, I'm pretty comfortable with what we've been suggesting about taking the seventy one thousand. Uh, but I don't wanna make it a precedence for any other developers coming in that are just gonna, I just gonna let stuff. Go and, 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 and take forever. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I don't mind working with people, but. I mean, I think he's shown a pretty good faith that he's really putting a lot of work into this one.
The only thing that, the only thing I disagree about is. You said there's one percent to ninety percent done with the roads over. I mean, you can say, I mean, you can say a set of presents, but how many people come in and say ninety percent of the roads are already done? Like when someone comes to us and says, hey, look, I have forty percent of the road.
Well, I would, I would say that. Uh, this is a rare occasion that we have a preliminary as-built plan. Typically when someone comes in and says, oh, I've done this, that and the other thing. We're basing it on Greg's numbers and Greg's going out there and, you know, tripping everything to a cost. And typically those. Estimates based on, you know, what we've seen from other projects, you're looking at. Three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars worth of work still needed to be done. And I, I would say for something like that, that's when typically someone would come in and request for all lots. And then they would have to provide us all the surety because, you know, we're not holding. This, so i, i, the, I guess the question is the value of the last two lots is at number thirty thousand. Because, you know, we are still holding two lots and there's a value for him to it. You know, he's, you know, he puts this amount of money i, into. Uh, a subdivision, um, not to get two houses out of it. He's looking to get four houses. So there, there's a monetary value for him to complete the project, you know, as a private subdivision, but there's a monetary value for us. To, you know, for the applicant to keep building houses on there and complete the, the rest of the work. So I, I understand the, the concept of, uh. Preston setting, um, but I, I, I would say that. There is some due diligence from the applicants and, and providing preliminary as-built plans as well as information for us to look at. Which we could consider as part of this discussion, you know, if. You know, other projects and this is something we probably would need to reflect better in our, uh. Subdivision rules and regulations that, you know, someone come in and provide us an accurate depiction of what work needs to be done. Um, whether it be a preliminary as-built plan or i, in some sort of accurate sense where we can look at and go, you know what? You're correct, you know, and then. But it's, it's, yeah, it's attributing a value to the remaining lots, which, you know, I, I.
So why, so why don't we do this? I, I'm probably fine, but because I didn't sit on the hearing, I'll run the vote, but why don't you vote? I'll put you on my place, Eric. As the alternate. So if somebody, I'll just keep track of it. Somebody wants to make a motion? Either way. So what, what two lots are you looking for? Just so we get.
One, one and two.
What, what is the accurate number now? It's the seventy one.
It would be seven, seventy one, seventy one thousand seven hundred and sixty. Uh, would need to be received by our department, a check bond amount, um, for lots one and two to be released. So what typically we would do is you guys would come in, sign off on it and I would not give that piece of pa. So that piece of paper would have to be recorded at the Registry of Deets. Um, and that piece of paper is also once notarized and recorded, would be provided to our department for building permits.
And then you guys would also tie it to the typically Mr. Solari. A recalculation and a full bond would have to be placed before any occupancy typically, correct?
Correct.
That's the most two lots, right?
It would be lots one and two.
Though, but it, they'd have to be paid before he gets his C O O on lots one and two.
Yeah, there's, there'd be.
Seventy one, seven sixty to be paid.
That's right, but he has to, before he gets a C O O and on, on any of those lots, one and two, he must pay the remain.
Or do a calculation to show this work's been done, this work remains up. Did anybody make a, so we got the lot numbers one and two. Did anybody want to make a motion on it?
One and two for the seventy one, seven sixty.
So release lots one and two for seventy one, seven sixty. Any conditions to that?
Conditions were upon, you would be of occupancy.
Uh, no occupancy until the. On one and two and then.
And then I would also have a, a condition of making, like you said, is an updated as-built. The updated calculations after the.
Right, alright, so no more lot releases, no occupancy permits until the whole thing's settled up, you know, one way or another, works done or.
That's, that's good for me.
Is there a second to Mr. Fabroski's motion?
Second.
Okay, um, so Mr. Pratt, Mr. Fabroski made the motion. Mr. Geller seconded it. Any discussion?
I guess the, um, only outstanding issue I have is we're kind of. Assuming that the value of lots three and fo, four without like actually having a number on that, isn't that, isn't that a little sloppy on our end?
Well, if, if we use a fair, like an, if we use a number of valuing it based on work to be done as twenty five thousand, then we're valuing essentially each lot as. Twenty five thousand based on, I guess, a hundred thousand dollar number, whereas we would be take, we're taking in. Seventy one, seven sixty. So I guess if the value of those two lots are. Based on just splitting it in quarters, then we're getting more money for the value of two lots.
And just for clarification, Mr. McDonald, you, you weren't here when, or I don't know if you saw Mr. Mr. O'Brien doing the math, but. We're getting the full construction value and it's just not getting the contingency until. He asks for a lot release and then we'll get the contingency or they'll settle up based on work done.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that was all I had.
So we do have a.
We have a motion, Mr. Fabroski. Second, my Mr. Geller, Mr. McDonald, the discussion, is there any more discussion?
No, sorry, that was it for me.
So I'll take the role, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
Sorry, I screwed that up, guys. I forgot halfway through. I didn't sit on.
Sorry, it was in a six, it wasn't a six O vote, so it's been.
What's that?
It wasn't a six O vote, that's fine. Um, so yeah. We'll get that, um, taken care of and you give us a check. We'll talk.
Thank you very much.
Good for you.
Thank you. So Shane, you need three signatures for a lot release, right?
Yes, uh. When he, you know, it, whenever you're available, um, the typical process that I do is. You know, we've had lot releases. I think a good example that we had recently was Wampa Noah Estates where. We had a, a lot release request probably three or three years ago where. They asked for all the lots and we gave it to them because they said they were gonna come in with a check and they never came in with that check. So, you know, he could have, the same issue, the same thing could have occurred here. He could have asked for all four lots and if based on the hundred four thousand. We could have released all the lots, but he wouldn't get them unless we checked, so.
We're actually in a better position if you think about it. You got, you have two lots and you're only deficient thirty grand.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
I think so, that's why I looked at it.
Could have released four lots for a hundred and seven.
Yeah, sure. You know, we didn't have to nickel and dime anything. We got, like I said, the value of the lots and the cost of what we got is, you know.
So.
It'll be at my office.
Mr. Tansy, this is a good, good point, time to bring this up because I think we should put it on later on in one of our agendas, Shane.
What's that?
So we have a lot of bonds hanging out there and once in a while we pull up.
You want the most recent bond? We can, I can get that to you.
No, I think, I think that, you know, we have neighborhoods out there like Old Field, Magnolia, that we're gonna, they, I'm sure they're gonna be coming in for lot releases.
They, they come in for street acceptances too.
Well, and we, we have neighborhoods that have. Twenty thousand left, eighty thousand left, fifty, the float, bonds floating around everywhere, right?
Sure.
But stuff that we approved, aren't we supposed to look at that bond and in our, in our rules and rights, it says we, they have to update it based on inflation and things like that?
Well.
Should we look at, should we look at unfinished projects and? Figure out if the bond is sufficient and if not tell them they need to update it?
If, if, if we'd, if we'd like to, um.
There'd be a time for more on any.
But I think that's, well, we're supposed to finish it within two years, but I, I think we should pull. We used to do that once and I don't, I, I think we did it for us once. We should figure, I'm sure the planning was holding a bunch of bonds.
We're, we are holding a bunch of bonds, um.
We should see what, what, what needs to be done in those streets and.
Yeah, if we wanna do like, we can talk about, I guess we can talk about it now, but in regards to. I can give you the most accurate bonds because they're all accruing interest.
And then, and then because we also have like, uh, that neighborhood where we had the lawsuit, um, Nolan Park, I think there's only like thirty grand there, but there's more work that needs to be done. So maybe we should have conversations with these developers that have left thirty grand and a bunch of work that needs to be done.
Sure.
Try to get them to finish their roads and, you know.
Agreed.
Well, I think in that particular neighborhood, we didn't wanna use the bond because it didn't nearly cover it.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of outdated bonds where. Yeah, you know, I think, I think to, to Greg's credit, I think the, the, the bond amounts that he said are. More accurate of, uh, reasonable standards, uh, for today's costs. Whereas, you know, looking at older subdivisions is a lot of, you know, it's, it's very cute in terms of some of the costs. So at least here we have, and especially too as part of. You know, what we're trying to value this cost to, we attribute these items that Greg have to. On releases and making sure that the work's been completed. So I think we can, like, what, what we're doing for the, like we did the last project, we're attributing that number of seventy one thousand to real costs. And then we're just being kind with contingency because, you know, it, it's an opportunity for us to kind of. You know, kind of continue this project along and with the assumption that the developer completes the work. So that's where the contingency kind of lies its head.
Alright, so item seven, Mr. O'Brien, this is a open meeting law. Complaint against us from Mr. Peterson.
Yes, so.
The delay, the date of the violation was July, um.
It was the, the last hybrid meeting.
On, and I, I know there's a bunch of people on, online and I know Council Ellenberg is here. Um, and if, if you weren't here when we initially started, uh, Zero Lakeshore was continued to November fifth.
Okay.
Um.
November fifth, that's good. Is there anything coming up about M B T A density?
We voted on that already and sent you guys the letter.
Okay, what is it? What was the number that you landed upon?
We didn't, we didn't land on anything. We voted no on it.
Very good.
So, but we wrote a letter back as to why we voted no. And I think the two, um. Basically the two things were the first part affected the whole town and the second part was we didn't have a number to land on. So we needed that information to consider it.
Very good. Thank you.
And then, um. The subdivision for, for, um. Nine, uh, five ninety-three Plymouth Street was continued to November fifth. The Zero Pleasant Street Claymont Hotel was continued to December third. The street acceptance for, um, Timber, Old Field and Urbex Circle was continued to November fifth. And we just completed the Hampton Ave, um, subdivision. So now we're on item seven, open meeting law complaint. Mr. O'Brien, are you all set?
Thank you.
Mr. Brian, do you want to tell us what's going on?
Sure. So we got an open meeting law complaint. So as part of this.
Is that from the state?
So, yeah, it was completed by the state, it wasn't from the state, but we have to respond to the applicant, and they feel that they, they're, our response is okay, then they don't continue with it. They feel like our response wasn't appropriate, then they would continue to the state in which we would even have. So the request is, and I can read it, it's just as part of the record. So this complaint alleges a violation of the open meeting law, Master of Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty B, insufficient specificity in the meeting notice for the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting. The agenda item for the landscaping plan update for the Clermont Bridgewater Hotel Two LLC project failed to reasonably inform the public. The Attorney General's twenty twenty-five Open Meeting Law Guide states that the list of topics must be sufficiently specific to reasonably inform the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting. A person tracking the, this, the initial special permit for the hotel at Zero Corporate Drive, map eighty-three, lot eighty-five, would not have recognized this as the same matter due to the following errors. So there's three parts of that. It's incorrect address listed as Zero Pleasant Street instead of the actual address Zero Corporate Drive. Incorrect decision date listed as January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, when the vote occurred, January third, twenty twenty-four. And no clear indication that it was a continuation or related to the outstanding condition for an application listed as under review in the town of Bridgewater's official permitting database, permidize S P dash two-five dash three-four-eight-nine-two. These errors undermine the open meeting law's purpose by making the notice unclear and potentially preventing interested parties from recognizing the following matter. The same inaccurate description appeared again on the August sixth, twenty twenty-five planning board agenda as well as this one. So what action does the, do you want the public body to take in response to your complaint? In response to this complaint, I request that the planning board, you guys, provide an acceptable written explanation for the errors in the July sixteenth meeting notice. Detail the measures it will take to prevent similar errors in the future. And most importantly, take immediate action to inform the public that this and all future agenda items for the landscaping plan update for the Clermont Bridgewater Hotel Two LLC project are related to the same special permit heard on January third, twenty twenty-four.
So Shane, when we approved the hotel, it was listed as Zero Corporate Drive, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And now it's being advertised as Zero Pleasant Street, correct?
Well, it wasn't being, it's not advertised on the agenda.
So what, and we haven't taken action on this yet.
No, it's, we have not taken action on this, this not being a public hearing.
So, so why don't we, why don't we going forward change that to zero, to, to Zero Corporate Drive, also advertised as Zero Pleasant Street, then put the map and the book number.
That's fine.
So that very clear as to parcel number, Zero Corporate Drives, Zero.
And we can correct that for the December third meeting.
But this was never a public notice, it was just.
No, this is more, this was an item that, so when the decision was rendered, it did state it as Zero Pleasant Street, but it made references to Zero Corporate Drive. Talked about the same map.
It should match up with what's on the assessing database, right?
Sure.
So I think the response would be is that we'll correct the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Going forward, we'll give specific map, book, and address based on the assessing database.
Sure, we can do that for all other projects as well, too.
And what, what else do we have to respond to?
That the decision.
I didn't, I didn't realize.
That the agenda, so when I put it on the agenda originally, the date on there was January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four because that's the date when the appeal period ended. So I didn't attribute it to the date that the planning board made their decision. I did it by the twenty-one day appeal period. I, for this particular decision, because that's when the two-year clock really kind of starts, I did it for this one, so I just attribute it because that's what it says on the cover page.
Well, two-year clock starts the day of decision, not the appeal.
Well, the, we kind of tie that into the appeal.
No, if the day of decision is January first, and the appeal is twenty days later, January twentieth, the permit expires on January.
Sure, but they can't do any action with it. Well, they can take, I guess, action within that time, but they're at risk.
So I think you should also change to advertise the correct decision date.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Right.
If that's what you feel it, when violate the open meaning law or could correct the action.
Yeah, I mean, it, it should be accurate, so it should be Zero Corporate Drive, put the map, book and lot number, right? And then change the decision date. And just maybe put a star under it saying previously advertised on.
We just correct it. I don't think we have to spell out. Alright, well, I'll leave it up to y'all.
And what else? So did we answer all the?
Oh, on, the third one is on permidize, so as recently, we've kind of opened up permidize for public viewing is the building permits are. So, un, under that, it, it has that project under, as under review as well as I think the Perkins Foundry adjacent to it is under review as well, too. That's just on me to kind of correct that. You know, there's different steps from an administrative standpoint to click on certain items of, you know, as we are all aware, those decisions have been rendered. It's just me kind of clicking something on permidize, so it's just me playing catch-up as well as playing catch-up on a bunch of other things.
Does anybody else have thoughts on the corrections? Just, just make the correction so it's correct, right?
Sure. I, I don't think there was any issue with that last meeting in terms of people not knowing about what was happening. I, I think you had a good crowd with that.
I have to say, like, when I go on, like, a zoning board of appeals, the Concom, it's, it's very vague, like, what they're even considering. It says, like, variance X Y Z street, you know, so I think townwide, we need to do a better job with, like, being clear what things are.
Yeah, I, I, you know, the reason that it was placed as Zero Pleasant Street is because the decision stated as Zero Pleasant Street, and part of that decision was, you know, that condition. So I could have also specified, you know, condition that we were talking about, and I could also place what that condition was, so people didn't have to go to the, it's just a matter of how much info, it's not about how much information is just, you know, at what point do you get so general, or how specific you get based on a planning board action item? If it was a public hearing, you know, we obviously include the, all the information within a legal ad and all that. We don't necessarily place the legal ad as an agenda item.
Anything else?
No, you can correct it for December, but that's not an issue.
Mr. McDonald, you're good?
Yeah, I mean, you sound like, you know, very small issues, but they should be corrected.
Yeah, it's not, it hasn't been voted on yet, so we'll.
As, as well as, it's not, it's not a public hearing item, it's a planning board action item.
Alright, other business, Shane, I.
Just, yeah, just on that, do you want to, we can, I can write up something quick, just saying we're doing corrective action for that, and then we.
Why don't you write it up? Send it to the whole board, and if nobody has an objection back, back to you, I'll come inside, right? Alright. So item eight, other business, meeting minutes, the seventh and the twenty-first?
Uh, still playing catch-up on minutes, so.
We don't have those yet, correct?
Nope.
Board items, next meeting, we kind of, there's basically everything here that we continued, except for Clermont. And what else? Maybe a zoning.
Yeah, we have a zoning amendment referral for the senior housing village development, I think I will have to provide that to the board, but it's essentially changing one number for open space from twenty percent to forty percent.
And then, so I have a committee report, so I, I serve on the CPC. And the one thing that keeps coming up is that when we did design Oldfield, and that's why it's, we gotta address this, when we did design Oldfield, the Latola family was very good about, they worked with Silver Engineering, and it pretty, pretty well laid out subdivision. Oldfield Estates, they left a large piece of open space along the river, which has since been taken by Wildlands Trust. They also left another piece that, it, so the Jenny Leonard Park is a beautiful piece of land, it's right on Cherry Street. It has probably a six or seven foot elevation change. There may be, there might be one parking spot on the street. Very difficult to access. So when we incorporated, when, when the, when the Latola family designed this neighborhood, they came to us and said, hey, you know, we're willing to do something with the Jenny Leonard Park. It was dilapidated, stuff was falling down, hadn't been maintained in years. They, they offered to do two things. They offered to go in and clean the whole site and remove the debris. And they offered to add a big piece of assemblage that went out to their street. Goes behind a couple of homes, creates a beautiful walking trail in there. I mean, someday that could be a beautiful park. And we created a parking lot. Some neighbors came and said, hey, the parking lot, we don't like the parking lot. The developer came and put a bunch of trees there. And it was always the assumption that the town was going to take it. And that's kind of falling apart. I think there's a few people in town that don't want to take it, and it's kind of stalled, the whole thing. And we're going to lose our opportunity to take this great piece of land because people are saying, oh, we can't maintain it, or there's drainage structures on it, or and it just seems like there's all these excuses to not take it. I, I think we're missing out, because if, if the HOA ends up taking it, or took it, or wherever that lies, that blocks access, so they can restrict any public access to that park from that, that side. And if you drive in there, drive in there, there's where the mailbox, they, they actually came in and broke off where the mailboxes are, because we said we never want to accept the mailboxes. So they came in and like reformatted that, so the Latolas planned it out, the Latolas developed, designed it, so we'd have this beautiful parking lot. And it then gets sold to Longville Homes who developed it. They worked with us great on it, they removed the, the driveway and the, and the mailboxes. There was one small change, there was water collecting there. Mr. Tansy, you probably know about this, and so now there's a now they, they installed in the middle of, behind the parking lot, which is now part of the open space, they installed a catch basin, which brings any water that collects air across the street to the, to the recharge area, so. I mean, I, this, this is before us, and it's too bad we waited this long, but we, we really need to talk to Attorney Castanetti, if the town, I, I don't know why we wouldn't take it. I think should go to the council for a vote to take it. But it's, it's really too bad that we spent so much time designing a neighborhood to improve a public park, and now the town doesn't want it. So, well, certain people in town don't want it.
Yeah, I guess, I guess to that point, I think I guess it's just that we need to provide it as an action. I, like I said, I, I, I'm pretty sure that the Wildlands Trust portion.
It's done.
Was, but there was a, there was a, a letter that was provided from, I think, Oldfield, Longville, stating of right of first refusal, and I think that would be the same situation for that. So at that point, that's when I guess we can, he can decide.
Right, but this neighborhood is before us to close out, and we're running out of time. So I'd like, as, as a condition of, if we know the town is willing to take it, or the councils want it, which, it's a beautiful piece of land, it's some, I know right now we might not have staff to manage it, maintain it and everything else, but there's not much to maintain. All the, all the structures, you can walk in, and all the structures have been removed.
Yeah.
It's basically, it's basically doubling and tripling the size of this beautiful park. And providing parking, and they built a walking trail already. Drive in there, the gravel's there. The, the trees are there, we walked, we walked it, there's nothing, right now, there's nothing to maintain. Council.
Can I ask if or bring it up to the council as an agenda item? Do you think it warrants it?
Well, I think the way it would work is, is, is attorney, is attorney Castanetti would submit it to you guys to take. Or, or the other thing we can do is, that's why this is before us. When we talked to Attorney Rollins before, it could be, it could be added to the street acceptance. You could add that piece of property, just like you would a drainage lot, to the street acceptance.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we should, we have a new town manager now, maybe he's more open to it. I think, I think, I think it's a no-brander.
We, we as a planning board can't take real estate.
No, I know.
I've been fully agreeing with Mr. Driscoll. It'd be criminal for the, the town not to accept that parcel. It's directly in the public good.
Let me design it. Yeah, and you live, you live right over by that, Mr. McDonald. I mean, drive through, the gravel parking lot's there, I, you know. I think, I think Attorney Castanetti already transferred it to the HOA, but I think it can come back to us. So I, we just, it's, it's, and I had talked to him a while ago about it, and I know he was having difficulty getting people in the town to respond to him, so let's see if we can make some headway with him before he comes in, in the next meeting. Maybe that can be a condition of the acceptance, right?
It's, I think it's a condition of the planning board decision. But I think the biggest thing, yeah, like, is the, the action of the right of first refusal. It's, how do we accept property? You can't, you know, you can donate it, but, you know, part of that process is, it'll go to HOA if the act of first refusal.
And the reason I brought that up is it comes up in CPC all the time, so there's a member of recreation on there.
Sure.
And there's a member, you know, and, and that comes up, and there's a member of open space on there, and that comes up all the time. Where's the planning board with this, you know, Jenny Leonard open space and.
Well, it's not really. I understand, I would say it's your guys at work, our.
Well, I think as a resident.
It's a policy they have to.
It's, it's pretty nice you can pull in there and walk these beautiful trails that are there now. It's great for the neighborhood, but I can understand why the neighborhood wouldn't want it, because now the public can access it, but it was, it was designed for that, so.
Sure thing.
So can you follow up?
I'll talk to Lee, yeah.
And then follow up with, you know, the town manager as well.
Yeah.
And see if we can make this part of the street acceptance.
To be honest, like, draft a letter as a board pad or something, would that be of assistance?
I think, I think when they came into modified, or he came in for modification, one of the modification, one of the, one of the modifications where we asked for first right of refusal for that piece.
Even then, too, I think the, the recommendation, the non-recommendation included information about that or a question about that, that was.
Yeah, so we need to find, find out.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to Lee and kind of.
And if you can see if we have historical documents, because I know I've said it, like, we want, we want that piece of first right of refusal for that piece.
Yeah, I've, I've seen a right of first refusal somewhere, but I think it was attributed to the Wildlands Trust. I mean, they put it give the property to Wildlands Trust, but that was the town saying that we don't want it first.
Alright. Do you have anything else, Shane, for a planners report?
Uh, well, I'd be remiss to not mention that we're having, well, the tree committee, I know Ray Jemmy is not here, but he's our representative on the tree committee. But you mentioned at the last town council meeting, there's a tree forum on the twenty-second, that'd be at six-thirty at the library. Other stuff going on. We have, our office has a open space and recreation plan update out, out for RFP right now. So we're gathering, we got a, a grant, a forty thousand dollar grant through EEA to update our open spacing recreation plan. So that allows us to be eligible for other park grant, trail grants, good faith with the state. So we're looking at consultants, so we have that out right now. And I think we have that out for another week or so, two weeks. So we have that. It is getting, our next meeting's in November, so I'm working on our twenty twenty-six planning board schedule, so I'll have probably for the next meeting kind of a list of dates, if that works out for everyone. I think the second, looking at the schedule right now, I don't think we are affected by April vacation again next year.
So Shane, just next meeting, we're meeting with the council, correct?
Yes.
So next meeting will be in person?
It'll be Zoom.
Why?
Because we, we advertised it via Zoom.
But typically, when we meet with the council, we meet in person.
Oh, but I would say you did for the MBTA the first time, but in other instances, we have.
The second.
Second meeting.
But why can't we change that first meeting to in person as well?
Well, the, the issue is that we have to advertise something out.
Oh, so you advertise the public here, that, yeah.
Be it only Zoom. That was discussed with council staff. But if you guys can always continue it to the second meeting, I guess. But, one of the things I want to kind of bring up, because I know this has been a discussion item, looking at, for, it's not really, I guess, maybe to the board's benefit, but we've always kind of provided plans to departments for comments prior to meetings. But I think, looking at the idea of bringing back like a technical review. So I'd probably be asking for maybe a board member to sit on that. I'm looking to kind of do that maybe, maybe once a month. I gotta just situate, you know, scheduling with other departments, but for projects that aren't necessarily before us yet, so something, someone that doesn't necessarily have an application. You know, someone that doesn't have something before permidize, they can get some, you know, you know, having some concept plans before staff to give some, you know, feedback prior to them. Because right now, I'm waiting for them to kind of, well, we can meet with people, but you know, typically, before something's distributed, it's when we get a completed application, someone's paying a fee, all that. So it's, it's allowing the opportunity for developers to kind of meet with staff maybe once a month. meet with staff maybe once a month. Um, we do meet with people and gather the people, everyone together for pre-construction meetings. Um, but looking to add to our schedule, not necessarily board schedule, but, uh, staff schedule to have a once a month technical review meeting. Um, to have like Fire Police DPW to people have ideas or some accurate plans prior to filing an application, we can tell them some of the news that we already tell them during meetings or during that process.
So actually, and and I, CB, I was looking at a CBD, a CBDS zoning claim.
Mm-hmm.
One of the requirements is they have to demonstrate they have adequate potable water. So do we, do we have a system in place since our last meeting? Mr. Tansy, can you follow up with Mr. Don Tejero? Do we have a water impact form that we can make part of our packet?
We do. Yes, we do. And we have been making applicants, um, submit that water impact study form to us. And, um, then it, then it goes out to review.
I don't know if that is, I gotta talk to IT.
So, uh, so can you, can you get us, can you send Shane a copy of that?
Sure.
Because when we have the pre-submittals, they should submit that to us as a fee right away.
Well, it would be something that we would either need to add as a fee or require as part of kind of a regulations for it or give people, nothing. Is it just us, us asking? Well, we would need to, we wouldn't, the issue is that we would need to form, I would, I would say just for for developers sake, that we should probably formulate standards, some baselines, so someone knows coming in, so they can like type out.
Yeah, I mean, we, we shouldn't be talking about water capacity when a project's before us. That should be before the project comes before us.
Well, sure, it, it, or especially to making determinate, it, it, it would have to be some sort of standard that's a requirement of, if it's a DPW requirement rather than a planning board requirement, then it should be a something that's completed through a DPW process. It's just a matter of how we kind of integrate that, you know.
But can you, Mr. Tansy, can you make sure that we have that form? So we can say to applicants, here's the form, you need to connect with the water and sue it about me before you come to the planning board?
Yes.
Wouldn't well, it would be pretty much consistent.
What?
For dwelling water usage.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be really more commercial than, than.
Well, they, they. I, I. What do you look at dwellings title? You go, all your, all your flows based off Title V, Mr. Tansy, right?
It is.
And there's certain calculations of commercial versus residential for Title V?
Oh, yeah, right. Title, Title V has a whole schedule of, um, uh, daily flows depending upon the use of the property. But our, um, our water impact, um, study goes more in depth than determining how much water a, um, uh, a project will consume. It gets involved in how does it impact our infrastructure? Um, gets involved in contingency situations and so forth. It's actually a, a pretty involved study.
Yeah, because it's for some projects, people, you know, I think from previous projects, people have given us the gallons per day in the Title V counts whatever their project's proposing, but the, the issue is that we don't know. You know, someone could tell us, oh, this is going to be, you know, five hundred gallons per day. We can go, okay. But what impact does that do to our system? And what is, what is the number that would affect your system? What's?
Well, all I'm trying to do is speed stuff up. So if, if they want it, we should have it so we can give it to the applicant.
No, it's, it's got to, it's got to be readily available and you know, we can't, you know, that first meeting that we have with someone saying, well, did you do a water impact form? And they go, what water impact?
Alright, so we should, we should have it.
Got to be out there, it's got to be spelled out and processed. Either part, if, if it's something.
It al- it always used to be, like, when you were on the board years, right, when you were on the board years ago, before you came on the project, you did your water impact, you know. And then I. Well, you're not doing it on like a, you're not doing it on like a Form A lot.
Alright, so yeah, looking at technical review as a option. And as well as, we have some more street acceptances coming our way because no one wants to plow their roads in the, uh.
Alright.
Uh, but other than that, uh, I do not have anything else. Uh, we do have one more.
Any, anybody on Zoom have any public comment? There's a public comment section now?
Please raise your virtual hand. We can allow you to speak or if you're here in person.
Shane, can you see who's on?
Yeah, I got my computer, I got my iPad, I got, I just can't, I don't, I don't know what's going on with the screen right now. I gotta talk to IT. It's just, I can see half of someone's face, but people can still talk. So I don't see anything, no one's looking to publicly comment on us.
Yeah, there's only, uh.
Not count people.
Any, any public comment in here? Council Ellenberg, no?
There's only three members on digitally right now.
Well, I think we're all good.
Um, item nine, John, do you wish to, John? So move, Mr. Geller to the second. Mr. Praddy? Any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
The Fabroski?
Yeah.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
My name is.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Oh, I gotta end the meeting here.